All right, Priscilla, you ready to go? Beautiful. All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019, and this is the meeting of the Town of Silver City's Planning and Zoning Commission. Before we get started, could I ask you to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Priscilla, the roll call, please.
Commissioner Seibel.
Present.
Commissioner Costello. Commissioner Kara.
Present.
Commissioner Sandero.
Present.
Thank you very much, and we do have a quorum. Before we move on to the approval of the agenda, I will just take this opportunity to say welcome to our newest Commissioner, Mr. Vazza Sandero. This is your first meeting with us.
Yes.
And congratulations on your appointment, and I look forward to you sharing your wisdom with us here in these meetings.
Thank you, Chairman Seibel. I look forward to providing service to the community of Silver City. I consider that a great honor. Thank you again.
All right, we'll move on now to the approval of the agenda. You all have the agenda before us. Other than the change I just made, are there any other changes to the agenda? All right, hearing none, the agenda will stand proof as presented. We'll move on to the approval of minutes. The April 2nd, 2019 regular meeting. Haven't had a chance to review those. Do I hear a motion to approve them?
I motion to approve the minutes of April 2nd, 2019 meeting.
Motion. Do I hear a second?
There's a second, yes.
All right, motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries. Minutes are approved. There is no old business on tonight's agenda, which brings us to public hearing CU-19-01, request for a conditional use permit in a mixed-use zoning district for property at 1307 North Swan Street to be used for a group living facility. Applicant is Newton Investments LLC, business owner supporting people in need. And I'll begin by, with the oath. All right, now I'll ask everyone who will be testifying this evening, either in favor or in opposition to the request, to please approach the podium and have to swear you in. Now, just because you get sworn in does not mean you have to testify, but if you want to speak tonight, you need to be sworn in now. So please step up and take the oath. Thank you. Very good. If everyone is ready, if you would just raise your red hands and repeat after me. "I," state your name, "do solemnly swear that the testimony I am about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, one penalty of perjury." All right, if you would hold on for a second. Priscilla needs to get everyone's names. If you haven't done that already.
I did.
Okay. All right, perfect. Then we are in good shape, and we will begin with the staff report.
This is CU-19-01, 1307 North Swan Street. It's a conditional use permit for a group living facility in a mixed-use zoning district. Supporting people in need or spin is a company that provides services and housing for individuals transitioning from addiction, prison, or jail. They state that it's a sober living facility, I'm sorry, family environment, and are careful to vet participants for violent crimes, sexual crimes, and crimes against children. Section 2.2 of the Land Use Code of 2010 defines a group living facility as any residence for unrelated individuals that does not meet the definition of treatment facility or assisted living facility. A group living facility may include, without limitation, a secure residential treatment center, a shelter for homeless persons, a group home including persons assigned to such home in lieu of being sentenced to a correctional facility or upon their release from a correctional facility. A dormitory defined as a residence hall providing rooms for individuals or for groups usually without private baths. A fraternity or sorority associated with an academic institution such as a college or university. The Fair Housing Act of 1988 prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability. The Act defines persons with a disability to mean those individuals with mental or physical impairments that substantially limit one or more major life activities. The term "mental or physical impairment" may include conditions such as blindness, hearing impairment, mobility impairment, HIV infection, mental retardation, alcoholism, drug addiction, chronic fatigue, learning disability, head injury, and mental illness. It also states the division's enforcement of the Fair Housing Act's protections for persons with disabilities has concentrated on two major areas. One is ensuring that zoning and other regulations concerning land use are not employed to hinder the residential choices of these individuals, including unnecessarily restricting communal or congregate residential arrangements such as group homes. The second area is ensuring that newly constructed multifamily housing is built in accordance with the Fair Housing Act's accessibility requirements so that it's accessible to and usable by people with disabilities and in particular those who use volunteers. So the definition of conditional use permit is a permit used by the Planning and Zoning Commission that authorizes the recipient to make use of property for a conditional use in accordance with the requirements of this land use code, as well as any additional requirements imposed by the commission. Here's a map of the property. It's on Swan, and it's right next to the Knights of Columbus. On the other side of the Knights of Columbus is the Volunteer Center. As required by section 6.2.111 of the Land Use Code of 2010, the Community Development Department contacted the 34 property owners as identified by Grand County Tax Row within 300 feet of the affected area by mail about the proposed conditional use. I received two phone calls from Lily and Marcus and James Rivera stating that they were against the request because of safety issues the neighborhood has faced in the past. Elizabeth Stockfield came in to review the file and states that she also opposes it. She stated the neighborhood has had rough times and would like to see it better. We also had Randy Woodward and Ray Sedan come in to review the file. She stated that it does not seem that anyone is managing the property and that there may be more than 10 residents there. I did let her know that she can call the police if there is a nuisance and the fire marshal if there's more than 10, more than people living there than reported, but the issues need to be reported. The Planning and Zoning Commission in approving a conditional use permit shall make the following findings as required by the Land Use Code and Zoning Code, section 6.3.7(c), and may attach to the permit the reasonable requirements in addition to those specified in the Land Use Code to ensure that the development in its proposed location will not endanger the public health and safety, will not injure the value of adjoining or nearby properties, will be in harmony with the area in which it is located, and will be in conformity with the town's comprehensive plan or other plans officially adopted by the town. The Community Development Department staff recommends continuance of this request to allow sufficient time to review new information that's been made available as of today's date. I did receive a police blotter report on the address from the police department, and I wanted to go over with the commissioners what was reported. So on March 28th, 2019, there was a call of a citizen assist for a male being beaten up. On May 1st, 2019, there was a welfare check, it said welfare check on a four-year-old female. On June 17th, 2019, they were serving a warrant to arrest two males. On June 20th, that one just said it was a follow-up, there was no information. And on June 23rd, 2019, there was a welfare check disturbance, that one was at 3:27 a.m. There was a male outside yelling and banging on the doors going on all night. On June 25th, 2019, there was an agency assist, and there was a warrant served on a male. So I want to go over the four findings and how I responded to them, or the department has responded to them. "Will not endanger the public health and safety." Spin states that they're properly vetting participants, and the facility is a sober living family environment. They can lawfully run their business as long as they do not create a public nuisance according to the town's code. This would be a municipal offense, and the town can revoke their business license. So although as of today we received the police blotter, I just wanted to report that. "It will not injure the value of adjoining or nearby properties. Since it's zone mixed-use, group living facilities are in allowed use with a conditional use permit." "Will be in harmony with the area in which it's located. The mixed-use district is intended for accommodation of small-scale commercial and residential uses. Neighboring properties include the Volunteer Center and the Knights of Columbus." "And will be in conformity with the town's comprehensive plan or other plans officially adopted by the town." Specifically, the proclamation of the Town of Silver City, which proclaims the month of April 2019 every year, Fair Housing Month, and that states fair and equal housing is a right guarantee to all Americans. The principle of fair and equal housing is not only a national law and policy but a fundamental human entitlement, and all citizens have the right to live where they choose within their financial means. People must not be denied housing because of race, color, religion, sex, national origin, handicap, or family status, and the Town of Silver City acknowledges the importance of assuring fair and equal treatment to all citizens.
Priscilla, I have a question for you.
Okay.
You mentioned the police blotter report.
Yes.
Was that all associated with the same address?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so that concludes the staff reports. Thank you very much. A quick question. I noticed in the letter from the applicant that there are seven beds in the facility. Is that correct?
Yes.
And the code allows how many?
Well, as far as fire code occupancy goes, they're allowed a certain amount before they trigger a different type of inspection.
Right.
So if they go above, I believe, 10 occupants, and this is only what the fire marshal told me, then they would be a different occupancy. Although they don't have a business license yet, that's, they're temporarily doing business on hold based on this decision.
Okay. And there isn't a range in the code for the number of people that can live in a group home?
No.
Okay.
I don't believe so.
All right, thank you for the staff report. I'd like to invite the applicant.
Oh, I have some questions about this case. How long has this been in operation without a license?
I don't know the date that they came in with a business license application, so the town didn't know anything prior to that, but when they did come in, they were given this conditional use permit, and they were told. So I'm not exactly sure of the date that they brought the business license.
Do you know when the conditional use license was issued?
It was approved May 21st.
Okay.
But I don't know what the date that they picked it up.
Can you bring up that slide again, the last one that you had? So on that slide, it says, "lawfully run," they can lawfully run in the first paragraph, "they can lawfully run their business as long as they do not create a public nuisance according to the town's code." How is that defined? I mean, I know the town's code, but I mean, what I heard you say from...
That is why the staff is recommending continuance, so we can talk to the town attorney to see how many times a public nuisance needs to be reported. Generally, a business license can be revoked at any time by the Community Development Director. So we need more information before, and that's just our recommendation. So the town's recommending, but that doesn't mean it's approval or disapproval.
So I'm assuming the Community Development Director has reviewed this?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I'd like to invite the applicant to join us here at the podium and make your case.
Hi, I'm Priscilla. There's a button right there.
The remote button, there. Perfect.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
My name is Priscilla Wilber, I'm the director, and to answer your business license questions just a little bit. We moved into the Swan Street property in April, and so your marshal, the police blotter report, it's not pertaining to us. Only the most recent two, the June ones, we had an incident with a gentleman, and we, well, some of the neighbors reported him, but I have arrested him eventually. They helped me in jail for a while. And so...
Okay.
We had two, and it was the same incident, the same gentleman. We have been in operation since February of 2018, and we have business license at our previous residence.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, no, we've had the transitional housing since February 2018. And we were, had a business license doing business at our previous location, and we did have Pat Marshall come in and look over the property before we moved in and make sure that it met, would meet his recommendations. And we have seven beds. We do vet our people the best we can. We do background checks. Our people are monitored by probation and parole fairly closely. We did have an incident recently, like I said, with a gentleman.
Hi, I'm Barbara Mora, and I'm a board member for Spinz, supporting people in need. We're a nonprofit since February or March 2017. The transitional housing has been operational just a little over a year, and so it's one of two projects. Our bigger project we're still working on, but it's all under, for those of you who don't know really about what we're doing, we're about permanent supportive housing and the concept of housing first. And this is happening all over the country in pockets. It seems to be catching on best in small communities such as Silver City. In fact, there's eight projects looking at doing what we're doing. We're all working together under the umbrella of the New Mexico Coalition to End Homelessness. And it's one story, but we're actually ahead of all the other projects in the state with our small project as a transitional housing, the one that's now currently at the 1007 North Swan. And so, as Christie was saying, this is to bring in a very carefully vetted population, you know, working, most of these men, it's only for men, it's not men and women, it's sober living, it's not open to people who have been convicted of violent crime or sexual predators or methamphetamine production. They're supervised, it's not in transitional housing 24/7 supervision, but during the day, Christina and her assistants are there sorting other people, and that may confuse the community at times, thinking that all these people live there. They don't, because other supportive care is given to other community members. Christie's a social worker, assisting people either stay in their housing, or there's, you know, all kinds of needs that people have, and that's a lot of what Christie does in addition to the transitional housing. So at any time, there's only seven beds. There's, of course, because it's a family living environment, other people can cover that. We've had one client who's doing very well, who has a child, who comes, has spent some time with him. Many of these residents don't have family, like another situation where a person is coming out of jail, has done their time, maybe still on probation, and if they have family, they take them in, that's what happens. And so we have people very similar to the people who are living with us, coming in our, you know, 1307 North Swan, that you just don't know about because they're living with their families. So we really are taking the place of family for those people coming out of jail who would otherwise be on the street. And with the supportive care, it's been very successful around the country, supportive housing. So they're getting therapy, individual therapy, group therapy, mental health needs, medical attention, all kinds of support. We operate under grants and private donations. We've really come a long way. What else can I say about what we're doing? Anything else you can think of? Yeah, and I guess we're just now able to answer questions. Very often, people don't understand what we're doing, and, you know, not surprisingly, people have some fear about, one, it's not a, it's not a homeless vendor, this is not open for everybody. We're really, really trying to carefully vet our clients who will be there, and it's transitional housing. The intention is that a client might stay there about six months. It's not like they get kicked out based on time, but with the supportive care to find a job, to save enough money to find more permanent, excuse me, housing, is that that's the intention. And we've already successfully transitioned a number of these young men out.
Forty-eight percent in the last year, I was kind of proud of the number.
Right, and they're not all coming out of jail. One was, one of our earlier ones was an 18 and 19-year-old who had simply transitioned, he had aged out of the foster, foster home program, and he needed a place to be. He wasn't with us for very long, but Christie was able to connect him to some other family members some distance away, and so we're open to serving people in need in a careful, careful manner, because we do, we want to be good neighbors in our neighborhood, and we want to model that for our clients, this is how to be a good neighbor and get on with the good life.
So you had a previous facility for, before you moved to this Swan Street location, correct?
Correct.
Was that a smaller facility? What was the reason for the move?
It was a smaller facility, and Mr. Knutman was selling the building that we were in, and so he helped us acquire anyone to be located.
There's an incident that we talked about here earlier, and is that a common, has it been a common pattern? What was the history like at the previous location?
We've had a couple of incidents, not violent incidents, but people who were allowed. And the recent incident, the police blotter incident, was a gentleman who reached out of a lot downtown, and he was on pre-trial services, meaning he had an ankle monitor on, and he was being drug tested every couple days, and he was doing really, really well, and then he decided to cut his ankle monitor off and start drinking, and that's when he got into some trouble. But it was only a couple days, and they picked him up, he's in jail. We worked really hard to resolve problems right away. We don't have a lot of trouble, we don't...
I would say, I would say one more thing, one more thing about that client, is he had some known mental health problems, and he had been homeless and, you know, frequented the downtown area, and, yeah, had been very problematic to the Town of Silver City in the downtown area, so officials were very supportive of us giving this a try, taking him in. But I think, you know, it's also a learning process for us, that much as we wanted to be able to take him in, and he was doing very well, and it was wonderful to see him doing so well, but that this degree of mental illness is probably going to be more than we will be able to take care of at our facility.
Good to hear. Can you tell me a little bit about Knutman Investments? I'm assuming that they're not nonprofit, that they are for profit, given the title, and is this a company that's local, is this connected to Morones and Knutman?
Yes, it is. It is Morones and Knutman. It's Mr. Knutman part of it. And he is not a nonprofit. He put his name on our mortgage and told us that we pay it off the top, and so that's the arrangement we have with him.
And he is the one who's actually the applicant. Is there any reason why he's not here tonight?
You know, maybe he was, I don't know, I've been busy and I can't read between Kate while it's happening, as far as we know.
Generally, we have, in the severance and other cases, you can have a property owner, and because they're the property owner, they could be the applicant, but it will be a representative that's actually doing this process. So he's the applicant, but Spinz has a representative. And it happens in a lot of other cases.
Usually with a real estate agent?
Yeah.
Mr. Knutman has stated that he is giving Spinz the agency to represent his property. I did have one question about neighborhood outreach and support. So in the case where you have particular problems with residents there and you have to deal with that, do you have any policies related to interacting with the, with the other residents of the neighborhood to ensure that you're not interfering with the nuisance ordinance?
Well, I recognize that these are all our very close neighbors here, so, and I can tell you where they live, in a proximity, and I've spoken to some more than others, and I know that there was one particular, one of the neighbors particularly that was harassed really badly when this incident happened verbally, and, and he called law enforcement and sawed a guy, and it was, it was one of those things we work really hard not to do. They have an open door policy, anybody can come in anytime. My office is in the back, located in the back of the property, and I can see the driveway and both houses from, from my office, and I'm there from usually 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock in the morning to 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock at night. I have surveillance that comes by several times at night from drug court and check some people and have them blow on their alcohol monitor. So I'm a free to talk anytime, anytime I want to, to the place, or if you have a question or concern, I call numbers everywhere.
I would add to that, as very many men coming out of jail situation or with mental health problems or addiction, or more often living with family members who have like family, feel a family obligation, whereas we have written policies that clients sign, and we have pretty much a zero tolerance policy, we're not their family. We care very much about them and want them to succeed, but if there's a problem, they get evicted, and we do call law enforcement. And we're not, oh, we don't take them back, I don't think we've ever done that. And this is, you know, they know ahead of time, it's kind of, for a lot of these guys, this is their best chance. They've gotten out of jail, they're on the road line, in recovery, and they don't want to go back to jail. In the general public, men who come out of jail who don't have supportive environment, it's often a very short time before they're back in jail, because without the supportive care, they don't have a job, they end up stealing again, getting back into crime, and they're back in jail pretty soon. So that's why the Coercion End Homelessness is taking this approach to supportive housing to really create a path for success.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from the commission? No. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stick around, there, there will likely be other questions. Are there any other, are there any witnesses that would like to testify in favor of the application? All right, now we'll ask the folks who are opposed to the application, please step to the podium, point your time, state your name, and your testimony.
Thank you. I'm going to be right there. I don't know if I can read words, darling. I have 1307 North Swan, desperately across the street from the Knights of Columbus. I understand that I'm suffering, that I need to withhold. I owe no respect that to Mr. Knutman. Did I say that right? I don't wish to. How he lived on it, he sold a property and made it convenient for them to move to this property on 1307 Swan Street. It's very convenient for him, however, there was, and I owe, for a fact, there was... It's very convenient for him, however, there was, and I owe, for a fact, there was no notice. It's my understanding that there was, at least needs to be a sign on the property stipulating that this spin program was going to be in the area. In Yama? I don't know. That's my understanding. However, there was, and this was since April. I see a sign, like maybe another part of you, or another part of me, and then taken down the next day, and then I see one come over and do. I've had a lot of complaints. My problem is, and it may be more whatever I say now, because I should have called the police, and I didn't. I think to a certain degree that, you know, I said at least that it was a better neighborhood. If I lived across the street from your house, and I had to like that in a more regular session, I think you'd be pretty ticked off at me. You know what I mean? You'd, it's not normal, it's just not normal, and I'm not considering it. You can have a fit, and you can throw a tantrum every once in a while, but not as often as I see it in that neighborhood. The neighborhood itself is a problem, you know. I'm not saying you're other than, you know, except for near the neighborhood, but I don't, I don't. But I certainly don't wish you the extra period. And, you know, I just don't put up with it. I do understand, and I, and I consider it a problem, that the people that need it.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. I have a quick question for you. Since you live directly across the street, staff ran this sort of litany of police calls to the property earlier before we got into the testimony. And given that you live right across the street, it sounds like this has been a problem property going back well before Spin came on the scene. Is that be correct?
Well, we had a problem with someone being a repeat victim. And that brought the situation where the Plaza Columbus had been, had had signage as private property. So that, or otherwise, there was nothing that we used to do about it, because anybody could walk around the area, and that's what brought that up. But I was there, I was there just recently when some guy was having an argument with Mr. Morolla. And Mr. Morolla lives two houses to the right, right, and I could hear a guy calling her a jackass. That's totally understandable. I mean, when Morolla probably had some words to say herself, you know, you can call me a jackass, you know, why, why her?
Thank you, Mr. Trump. Any other questions from the commission? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Betty Sackell, at 1400 North Swan Street. And I do have a few issues. I really, I'm not against to have any other transitional housing, but I really don't feel like the, it's, I don't think it's the right place. Because I spend a lot of time at the Commons, which is right across the fence, and it's a place where we're trying to encourage children to come and learn how to garden, and I just, I don't think you would have this facility next to a school, and I feel like right next to this Commons, that we're trying to encourage a lot of children to be, kind of the same thing. And also, trying to get a little nature hiking trail along, you know, South Hill Creek, and I've seen men from the facility going down into the creek bed for welfare or reason whatsoever. So I just, I don't think it's appropriate, the area, for, I don't think it's the best place for something like this. And also, there's mostly elderly owned houses around me, and they just really don't accept change and a lot of noise either. And there have been problems, and I know that there's been, someone's been parking their car along and shining their headlights directly at the oncoming traffic on Swan Street, and directly in my eyes if I'm working outside, and I'm directly on the microphone portion, and also, they've shown their headlights on, going in Karen's back porch, you know, in her backdoor area, and it's quite an invasion of privacy actually. So, already experiencing problems, you know, and happening before I even knew what was going on there. I was just wondering, what are those people doing? You know? So, anyway, that's all I got to say. And thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Ms. Sackell.
My name is Karen Magdalena, and I live right next, we're just divided by a small fence. And I was the one who called the police at three thirty in the morning. I was really worried about the rest of my neighbors. And truly, my husband, who is a stroke victim and with two open-heart surgeries, and I have to watch over him all the time, and I have nothing against a group home or group facility. I worked for more than area for more than ten years. I know all about what it takes to be with people in need. And my complaint would be the volume of music that is so loud. I can't even explain to my husband, but he asked me, what am I saying? Well, I don't want to repeat to him what the music is all about, and it is so loud. I also found two whiskey bottles on my property. Like I said, I have nothing against the people there. There are two people that are from time to time, they have something that I have them do for me, just to help them out, because they're not all the same. But I have a neighbor who has this swimming pool out toward the street with small black children, and I don't know that's a good idea. So, what can I say? We're fence to fence, and this man that was screaming and knocking with a stick on all the vehicles and turning on another guy's motor with the music loud, the lights on, and it's just, we would not ask if they would come in, the residents of our neighborhood. I lived there, it lasted forty years, and we were all good neighbors to one another, always. And things just have changed recently. It's not very pleasant. I have come out of my carport, and I was confronted with a guy who had a pick right in front of me. I have another neighbor right across the ditch from us, which we live right next to, and he robbed us. He took everything he wanted, something that my husband had accumulated all his life. And just three or four days ago, I found a diaphragm across our driveway. He was hiding, he had a steel pipe with a blade connected to the bottom, something that he just wedged into a door to go again. And I took it away from him, after having hit with it, but I took it away from him. So we're just surrounded by, but it's not just very pleasant anymore to live there, and we were all so close to it.
And just briefly, I want to clarify, so you listed two, three incidents there. Those are just incidents in the neighborhood? Those aren't necessarily people from the group home, correct?
Yes.
Any other questions from the commission?
Next up.
Thank you so much.
So we're constantly in fear now, and so, it's my neighbor, my husband, he doesn't sleep, and it's just not very pleasant anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sackell. Would anyone like to testify in opposition? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Rainie Woodward, and I live at 1300 North Swan, as a non-resident. I understand the concept of supportive housing, and I think it's amazing. The execution of their program is very inadequate. Part of these men's hope to be successful and reintegrate back into the community when their establishment has given no regards to the neighbors who are starting themselves into our community. There's been no introduction, no contact information, no pursuit of local support, no event flyer, which they put on their website, which only became known now of June. Like, they began remodeling the building back in March. They moved in in April, but there are good people there since March. Now, whether or not they have any connection to them, we wouldn't know, because nobody has given us any contact, any, hey, this is what we're here doing, this is, you know, any reassurance. They want you to tell us that, you know, their security measures in place. They're saying that there's somebody there providing security from nine in the morning to nine at night. What happens all night long? You know, they are, they then get angry with one another, and it happens. It happens with people that live together. They don't always get along. We understand that. But to have outbursts in the middle of the night, one o'clock, two o'clock, three o'clock in the morning, this happens quite frequently. We don't always call the police. I don't call the police because I am a disabled female that is in fear of their retaliation. There is no security, there is no monitoring, there is no authority to make sure that they don't come and retaliate against us. Now, there is plenty of other females in the community that live by themselves, but I'm pretty sure they feel the same way. The other community members that I've spoken to, they feel that same way. That they don't call the police because they don't know what will happen to them. They live alone. That's not, we don't want any more problems than there already is. They say that the clients are held to a standard of behavior, but there is many behavioral outbursts. The clients are testing, they're yelling, they're threatening, they're threatening all of the neighborhood members. There has been times when these men walk down the street and say that they are going to kill everybody whoever is in their way. Now, whatever is happening on site, if the fight is happening there, nobody is there to break up the fight or monitor the fight. And if so, and if it's the community's responsibility for us to call the police, for us to be the authority, then we need to be aware of that, number one. Number two, whoever, one of the two members in the argument walks off and involves himself in the remainder of the community, yelling and screaming and carrying on, angry, so the rest of the community is still therefore responsible for their behavior, because nothing has been resolved. There is nobody there to take care of the situation. Everybody wants our community's support for this. The program is a good program. I understand it, it's necessary, but nobody has been wanting to involve us until now that they need a permit. Now they want our support. Now they want us to understand why it's necessary for the community to have this facility. We all get, we all get it, we understand, and it's necessary, but it's not for our community. Our community is not the best of communities as it is. We have known drug members in the neighborhood, but we know them. We know who to steer clear of, we know what they're doing, we know that they're in and out of jail. We know them, we're part of the community. We don't bother them, they don't bother us. Those members are the only ones that they seem to interact with. They don't interact with the rest of us, they don't offer help. There's been times that, there has been an elderly lady who was parked in the middle of Swan Street, which is at Binsy Street, and nobody offered to see if she was okay. Nobody offered to see if, hey, do you need help getting your vehicle off the street? I, being disabled and a female, went over to ask, are you okay? Do you need help? While they stood around and just watched. If you're going to be a good community member, then be a good community member. What are we teaching them? Like, what, I don't know, what values, what morals? I don't know, I have a lot to say inside. The only guidance I witnessed was there was a time when the members were pulled over. There was four members in a vehicle, and they were pulled over by the police. They pulled into the property, and they were talking to the officer. The officer was telling them, you know, whatever, I don't know, I'm not right amongst them. Next thing you know, there's a female who walks up onto the whole situation. Three of the members get out of the vehicle, the vehicle then drives off, parks, two members get into another vehicle and leave, two members go inside the house, and the female receives the ticket. She wasn't even in the vehicle. So what, what, how is that even possible? You know, burdening them receiving justice during, right then? The place has been running for months without notification of what's happening, and we don't get notification until in June. That was the first time that we received notice of what even the facility was called. So we couldn't even look it up online. Online, their wording is ambiguous, it's vague. Even to the letter that we received stating about this meeting, it says that they're helping us in need, those in difficult times and circumstances. I completely get that, but nowhere in that letter did it say incarceration. Nowhere did it say that they were coming from, you know, other judicial means. Nothing was stated, any of that. But you have to search and find it through all the vague wording. No one was invited to their open house. They had an open house in Maine prior to them even applying for this permit. None of the community members received a flyer to the open house. They want our support, but yet didn't invite us to go and see the thing, to go and understand what's happening, to know that we are safe, to know that we are okay in our community. Nobody invited us until today, the day we offered the open door policy. So they've been there established for months, which has been a good thing. This time is served, as a good time for us to understand. It's been a good indicator for us to know how the establishment operates in secrecy, how negative believers will be not monitored, and as it will be the job of us neighbors to enforce stability. And as to the probability of success being very marginal, as the company does not set a very good example following the rules itself.
I've been to jail. I'm a felon. I have done my time. I've been in a halfway house. I've done house arrest. I personally have been through drug court. I was not an outstanding member of the community, but I did my time. I have learned my lessons. I understand what these men are going through. I do not judge them. I completely understand the need for this place. However, there is nothing to provide any reassurance to any of us neighbors that we are safe, that our property is safe, that our family is safe. We know the members of the community that are drug members, we know this, and we know we are safe from them, because we know their activity, we know where they go, we know what they do, and they know that they don't mess with any of us. It's an understanding that's been placed for years. However, now, I don't feel safe. I know other members do not feel safe, and we should not have our safety in concern, because nobody provided any reassurance or security measures or authority or monitoring or anything when this place came about. We shouldn't be concerned about our safety.
Thank you, Ms. Sackell.
Thank you.
Are there any other testimony in opposition to the case? Are there any other testimony in opposition to the case?
Hi, my name is Landon Nunez, and we don't live across the street or next door, we live up higher up at Swan. But we've been there for thirty-three years and it isn't the best community. And we were plagued by gang members, we lived through the, the gang wars between the three local gang members, the shootings, the shooting, the innocent people that weren't even involved, the, the gang banging right there in that hole, in that whole block behind, behind the knives and in that general area. There is very little, if any, police presence. I realize that we don't have a lot of police and I realize it's, you know, there's a lot to cover in this town, but it's very rare that you see an officer just patrolling. And it shouldn't be the job of the neighbors to have to be calling the cops on them. It isn't, because we know, we know all about the retaliation. Where we live, we know all about it. And it should have been something that should have been taken into consideration, the neighborhood, the hood, and it's just not a place, it's just not a good place for them.
Thank you, Ms. Nunez.
My name is Fomi Aguiest. I don't live near the, near the area, I was born and raised on fourteen oh six Gold Street, which is about a block and a half from where this location is gonna be. I, I was born and raised there, I've moved a block and a half up Swan Street where I live now, right in the middle of gang country at that time when I moved. I worked in the town of Silver City for twenty-two years, I'm retired. I ran a program for the YCC program, which is the young, young students. I taught them building techniques, so I know what it takes to try to control young people or not control it, but to get them to understand what they're doing and what they're not supposed to be doing. One of our projects was to clean the big ditch. We have, we started right below, our staging area was set up right below Taco Bell at that time, Taco Bell was at the, at the highway one eighty. We went in and we trimmed all the trees four feet high so that if anybody was in that area, they could be seen by the people, the surrounding communities. I had to go in and specially train most of the young people in syringes, a number of just really nasty stuff that was in that big ditch. My problem is with this is you have the trailer park at Fifteenth Street, which is already a problem, has been a problem almost all my life. At, at fourteen, at Fifteenth Street, there's a cul-de-sac there that was reported many years ago when I, when I was, I was an officer in the union, I, I would attend council meetings. We had a young man, Orlando, that was complaining about this man bringing in people and he would build, build cheap homes and bringing trailers and it was against the code. At that time, the city did nothing about it. So now, now we're, we're, we have the problem there. That is where that stabbing happened about a month ago. So we have the trailer park, we have the cul-de-sac, now we're trying to bring these people into this area. And what I want you to understand is that you have a block road all the way from one eighty all the way to City Hall. That is the big ditch. There, you can't see in the big ditch. You have a freeway for anybody that wants to drop into that ditch and move back and forth. These people say that they can control this situation, they can't, I'm sorry, but they can't. I, I've worked with young people this way and we can't control them, okay? The problem with the neighborhood is that they don't know who these people are coming in. These people don't know who these people are themselves because by law, you can't state what these people have bothered where they're gone. That's wrong. So if you go in and you ask these people, "Well, who's staying here?", they can take, give you a name, they can give you this, they can give you that, but they can't really tell you their offenses. And it sounds like they have trouble, like she said, that they vet the people the best they can, but what does that mean, the best you can? I mean, right now, the state police are having trouble vetting people. I live on Eleventh Street, I'm a block and a half away from the, from the big ditch. And you can, when there's a problem at the, at the trailer park, you can see the police officers pull into the main streets and they sit there and watch the big ditch at the, at the bridges and, and all the intersections at the, and that's what they do, they just sit there trying to catch them as they go down from the big ditch. These people will have a, a freeway for the whole city to travel from one end of the city to travel to the other end of the city. And I know that they can't be controlled. I understand that they need to, they need to have a place to live and they need, they need some support, but it should have been done a better way and to just open it up and just bring them in and with no, no knowledge of to anybody. You have the Knights of Columbus when they have Bingo, you're bringing in a lot of belligerent people, you're bringing in all the targets, all the lands to the slaughter, right there next to these people. We need to understand that because we have, you're creating a ghetto from Highway one eighty all the way down to just about Dairy Queen, all up in that area. If you start opening these, the other places are starting to shut down a little bit. When, when I moved in at Eleventh Street, anytime I went outside to check my neighbor, my property, I carry my gun, I still carry my gun at night when I go out. My neighbors know I do. I advise neighbors when they move in that if they're in my area at night making noise and they come across me to let me know who they are, because I do carry my firearm. It's getting better, it's gotten better, but it's still, if you don't start to control it, if you keep opening it up to just everybody, you're not going to be able to control it.
Thank you, Ms. Tramonix.
Thank you.
Is there any other testimony in opposition to the advocacy? All right, so that brings us to discussion among the commissioners. We do have a recommendation from the staff to continue this hearing, which would mean essentially that we would postpone our decision until next month. If that's an option that's available for the commission, if that's the direction we decide to like to go, to give the staff time to obtain additional guidance. You know from reading your packet that we have a considerably narrower range of options here because of the type of use that this is, there are federal laws that come into place, it's a, it's a difficult decision.
Can we, at least, can we talk about the, what was raised by the residents of the community? Because I think that there were a couple of points that seemed to stand out. One was the due diligence with notice to the community about the presence of this, of the spin house. And I, as a commissioner, do not know what, and that question was raised by one of the residents, what is the signage requirement for that? What is the due diligence on notice of such a situation? And was that followed? That's a critical question to me. And the other question is in terms of the vetting and the measures, preventative measures, because we know there have been these incidents numerous times in June, and I think the staff is going to be giving us some more information about that, but I want to know from the spin organization more about that process. What is the, what is the vetting process? And at what point in time, what are the, what are the measures that are taken when you do have a problem? I mean, certainly, we've heard already from spin that there was a problem with, with one particular person over that June time period and they were, they were removed from the facility. That's one out of seven, that's not a very good batting average. And so I want to know sort of what the vetting process is and formally what the process is of recognizing when there's a problem, so that it doesn't come to three different incidences in a, in a three week period as we've just heard.
Can we have the applicant present if you want to address that question? So then we can certainly ask them to answer it.
I can answer the sign question. The town didn't know that they were there, or we didn't find out until this process started, so they were supposed to post the conditional use sign, I think it was June eleventh.
It was up.
Yeah.
We took it down about an hour ago before we came here.
And, and you still, you're still supposed to keep it up. But either way, I did pass by and make sure that they posted it. So that was followed, but before this process, the town didn't know they were there, there was no signs, and I don't know that a business has to have a sign, although they didn't have, they don't have a business license currently, so...
So I think that, that question is really important because if there was a violation of that, I mean, that, that seems very germane to this case because it's unimaginable to me that an organization can show up in Silver City, buy a house, and then create the same situation without any notice. That seems very difficult for me to understand.
Right. So the, our director, once they brought in that business license, she told them if they go through this process, that they can temporarily do business, but they still don't have a business license. And it can still, even if this is approved and these complaints keep happening, and this is what we're trying to find out how to handle it with our attorney, with the town's attorney, is as far as revoking a business license.
So do you see my, my concern here is that there's already been three violations prior to a business license?
Yes.
And we're being told that there will not be a problem in future, when there's already been a problem before the, this has even begun.
That is why our recommendation has to have a continuance, because we feel we need to do more research as far as legally what the town can do. Because if you look at the town code with the definition of public nuisance, well, there's a definition of it, but it doesn't say how many times it can happen before... So this is a conversation we need to have with the police department, with the town attorney, with some other departments that may be involved. This is our, this is why we have this recommendation.
Right.
And there are federal laws in place also as far as the Fair Housing Act. So there are a lot of things that I feel that we still need to look into.
I do want to come back to the Fair Housing Act question too, because that, there's some language questions that I have about that in regard to the comprehensive plan.
Ms. Murphy, if you mind addressing Commissioner Gray's concerns.
In my mind, there was three concerns, right? One was our vetting process, one was the signage, and the third one was...
The, the sort of backwards process that by which we came to tonight's hearing.
So it's, um, we have, we've, we have had a business license for a year. We renewed, when we went to renew, Jamie's like, "Oh, you need to renew for the new property." And I was like, "Oh, okay, yes, we do." And so we put in a change of address and that's how this came about. Um, I was, we were notified as, um, we did have the fire inspector go out and look at it before we even considered buying the property to see if it was gonna pass all of their things. And so it's not like we didn't have any engagement with the city at all. I mean, we've been engaged, in fact, the fire marshal was on our board for a while. And so we've, we have been engaged with the city. There is, when I bought my house, I didn't go around to my neighbors and tell them that I was there and that I was a felon and that I had all these things in my background and that they should watch out for me. And I also understand the whole, "This is a good idea, but not in my backyard" thing, and I, and we have the backyarders here, and so I, I expect that too. We aren't responsible for all the crime that they've experienced and they've been experiencing over the years. One of the reasons we told that area is because the neighbors are few and we're surrounded by businesses. We're not right on the ditch, there's property in between us down the ditch. We vet our people by this. When we did an application, we have an eleven-page application that they fill out with all their background information, with who their families are, are they close to one, do they have an estranged relationship, how many kids do they have, where were they before they went to prison, what kind of drugs did they like to use, all these questions. Then we look them up on the mexicocourse.com and, and then I collaborate this story, "Oh, is this what they told me they were in jail for? How many, what kind of things do they have previously, what are they in jail for now?" And that's all public information that you can just go on the internet and get, somebody's criminal background in most any state now. And so we look at that. I also get a report from, a conduct report from the whole time they were in prison. What kind of violations do they have? Were they disrespectful to staff? Were they, were they, were they caught with drugs? Were they not programming or all these things I looked at? And how many conduct violations that they have in the last year that they were in prison, you know? So we look at all those things, I run through the sex offender registry, we don't have any sex offenders, we don't house sex offenders in any capacity. Or anybody who's been convicted of a violent crime or crimes against children in general at all. We do our best to run a sober living house, some people relapse, and it might take us a second to catch up with them, but we do. We have about fifty percent success rate over the last year. We've had eleven people that we've successfully transitioned in permanent housing situations who have jobs, stable income, who are contributing to society. I mean, eleven out of twenty-two of us, better than the average transits one house success of thirty percent or twenty-five percent. We do monitor and most of our guys are on ankle monitors, so if there is a crime in the area, we can tell you if our guys were there because they have GPS monitors on their ankles. And, and like I said, I'm really sorry about the one incident that happened here in June, and we, we will work really hard enough to have something of that nature happen again.
And I guess my concern, you know, we've heard, we've heard a lot of concerns from the neighborhood. From the perspective of the commission, we often get those sorts of issues brought to us. And the scope of what we can reasonably consider is pretty limited because the planning zoning commission is primarily concerned with land use and the land use code. And so when it comes to criminal offenses, those sorts of things, those aren't things that really fall under the purview of this commission. There are certainly legal processes by which they can be addressed, land use is not one of them. And it's particularly complicated in this case because of the federal law dealing with the sort of institution that you operate. So for the neighbors, I'm gonna put that out there right off the bat. I guess where I'm troubled in this whole process is, is that there are land use regulations in the town that deal with exactly this type of facility. And it does bother me a bit that the organization moved into a residential neighborhood regardless of what the adjoining uses may be, it's, you know, it is what it is in their codes to deal with that. It's troubling to me that this wasn't considered and this process wasn't begun before the, before the move happened. I, I feel like this would be much more cut and dry from my perspective had that been the case. So I don't know that that's a question so much as that's just kind of where I'm at.
I think maybe I didn't really understand the whole process. I thought that if the fire marshal had been out, because that was part of our, seeing our last place, it was on the top floor and the fire marshal had to really do some research to make sure... to make sure that we were okay to be there, which his conclusion was we were. But, so that's why I wanted him to come in and check out what we were doing. And I didn't, it just didn't cross my mind that, I mean, I knew we already had business licenses, and we were moving into a mixed-use area, and so I knew it was okay for residential and business. And I just, I didn't consider the conditional piece of it. I really thought we fit in under what we were doing was okay. And at that, and at that point, we were required to notify the neighbors.
And generally, the process of the business license, if a business moves locations, then the business license in their own location is no longer. So you have to do everything all over again to get a new business license. Fire inspection, so I know Kyle went out there, but he didn't do a formal fire inspection.
Right. He has now, but...
But that would, and that's another thing that he, Kyle's a fire marshal, that he also said, and Milo, the fire chief, signed off on this, and he stated that a review of fire code requirements must be made with the fire marshal prior to issuing a business license. So, and that has to do with occupancy, depending on how many people are staying there or are there. They may require, I don't know everything about a sprinkler system.
A sprinkler system, or things like that. I think it's 11 people. I think he said as long as we're under 11.
Right.
Yeah.
And so there are processes that would have had to be done before.
And I guess I see some breakdowns, obviously, on the part of the applicant, but there were clearly some breakdowns on the part of town staff, and people that had points of contact with them that really maybe should have given a little more proactive education than...
Or reported it to our department.
Right.
Because we are the ones that report to code enforcement generally. Had we known, that process may have been different.
Are there any other questions from the commission?
Well, my, in listening to all the testimony, my impression is, is that there seems to be a bit of a conflict between Spin and the neighbors because of a breakdown of communication. But ultimately, everyone understood the need for such housing. So there's an ethical kind of underpinning here. So I will ask kind of the same question, is what policies does Spin have, concrete policies to ensure that the behavior of the residents doesn't create the nuisance that is the basis of what the neighbors are complaining about?
Sure. And I'm not going to stand here and say we're never going to have any issues, or that the police will never be at our place, because that, I mean, they come to my house, and I don't even live in it. You know, I mean, there's, people in general require the police on occasion, and that's kind of why they're there. And the incident that happened in June, it would have only happened once if the police would have taken him the first, once, twice, three times they were called, but they didn't take him until the fourth, fifth time they were called. So our concrete policy is if there's a disruption that is, can't be handled verbally, like me speaking to them, and the behavior changes, then if it continues to happen, and there are police complaints, then the resident's evicted, and they sign papers saying that they have no renter's rights, that they can't, they don't have to be given a 30-day notice, they can be evicted immediately, and they have to gather their things and move immediately, which is usually just a backpack or two, you know, let them pack up a lot of stuff. You know, most of the guys that live there are so happy to have a real stable place where they can learn, because they're really learning over again how to be humans, basically, that they keep rassle on each other. And when the incident with Frankie happened, with him walking up and down the street, and being loud, and yelling at the neighbors, which was horrifying, when that happened, I mean, the guys were the first ones to call me and tell me, "You know, this is happening. How can we, how can we fix this? And we should call the police." That's our concrete policy. If there's a problem, we call the police. And just like in my own home, I depend on the police when I call them to show up and keep me safe. And I also depend on them when they're called to show up and keep our neighbors safe.
Can I do a follow-up?
Sure.
This is just, this is more just a question. Would Spin be open to publishing this policy and having the neighborhood review it with openness to accept any feedback that the neighbors might have on adjusting a written policy to run the facility?
Sure, we'd be open to that. I'm open to any of the neighbors being as involved as they would like to be. That's awesome. I love the community's support and involvement.
Okay, thank you. For sure. I mean, you just got done saying you loved community involvement, so, but when you started, you talked about the legal requirements that you were aware of, which was the fire department and fire code. So you went from one neighborhood to another. How long were you in the previous neighborhood?
About a little over a year.
A year. And did you interact with the community there?
We lived right next to Mrs. Alvaro Dono, and I interacted with her quite often, yes.
And so when you moved to this new, new area, it did not occur to anyone in the Spin leadership to interact with the neighborhood? It sounds like to me. Is that true, or...
We interacted with our neighbor that's directly beside us, and she's had our guys over there help put in her yard several times, and help with things. I did introduce myself to the lady directly across from the driveway right before she passed away, and I've spoken several times to her family since she passed away. The gentleman that lives on the corner, and the one that lives on the other corner, I've not had a chance to interact with yet. And we've only been there two months. I just, I haven't had the occasion to interact with them. The one on the next corner is actually, the next, three houses are actually already clients of mine, and so they already know me, and they, their parents already work with me.
Sorry, I can put some input there, too. So the comments for the volunteer center is right behind us. And I know a number of people there, and had talked with them before we moved over about this, and they're very, the ones that I've talked to are very supportive of what we're doing. And on the day of our open house, which we did publicize, we thought a lot. We were, yeah, we was on, yeah, I think we did on one of the radio stations, too, and just talked it up a lot. It was on Cinco de Mayo, and it was festive. We did have a number of people, we specifically invited some of the county commissioners who did come, a lot of people who've been supportive since our inception, and just people in general. And so we had a pretty good turnout. We had free food, we had a musician there, just playing guitars, and, you know, we really wanted our clients to feel at ease, because, you know, they just come out of jail, they're often kind of wary. But it was a good event. We really wanted our neighborhood president, the community, to meet us and see what we're doing, and ask questions. And it made it an open policy that people can come by and visit, and we welcome that. And people ask, a number of people have asked, "Well, I'd love to volunteer. What can I do?" And I said, "Come by, especially vets, or people who've struggled with PTSD, who have walked this road, people have walked this road. Their great peer support to come in and just sit down, and it's an honor to hear their stories and model, model for them a pathway to success." So that's, that's our intention, and we really felt like we had advertised our open house, and it was kind of obvious that day that it was happening. It wasn't loud music at all, it wasn't amplified, but it was festive. I think we had a flame out, did we, or something at Open House right there at the street?
All right, commissioners, we have essentially two options in front of us. Do you need to make an affirmative motion in this case, make a decision on that, or we could follow the recommendation of the staff and continue this hearing to a later date, which I assume would be the first Tuesday in August, since that is our usual meeting schedule? I suppose we could continue it to an earlier time. I'm not sure, though, whether we would do that. So it's the pleasure of the commission.
Well, my impression is, is that there are some open issues that have a significant bearing on the existing neighborhood, and that requires, I think, more vetting than we're able to do this evening. This may require a written notice, and might require some agreements between parties that would ensure that both parties are getting their needs balanced and met. And my impression is it's not happening right now.
So did I hear a motion in there somewhere?
So, yes. I make a motion to have a continuance of this particular subject.
Okay, a motion for a continuance of the hearing to, that would be August the, August the 6th on my calendar. Do I hear a second to that motion?
I second the motion.
All right, a motion to second to continue the hearing. The next meeting of the planning and zoning commission is scheduled for Tuesday, August 6th. Is there any discussion on that?
I would like to know during this time of any police activity, from now until the time that we meet again, that we assemble in August. I would also like to know any due diligence required to notify a neighborhood when there's an opening of this kind, because I think this is critical to the precedence of this community. What I'm hearing happened, if this is correct, the trans, how all this unfolded, I don't think it's acceptable for this community. I think it's, it's maybe beyond our commission's authority, but from what I hear, I think, I think that there needs to be something clear in terms of this process of setting up, because I, you know, I echo what the neighborhood says here in terms of, and what the Spin folks are saying about what they're doing. I think this is the necessary service you're providing. I don't think that anyone in this room has a problem with the necessity of that service. We know that there's men coming out of incarceration that need this help, and we are a civil society, I hope, and want to support that, but the process of what we've heard is troubling, and I think we need to get to that question of the notice and what the process is.
All right. Commissioner Kara said, I think, this is an opportunity. I don't know how much, if any, of these things would be incorporated into our decision in the case, but certainly the next month seems to present an opportunity to some town departments that are connected to us to work out some plans to deal with this situation. I think it's also an opportunity for the folks at Spin to face with the neighborhood and address some of these issues to the extent that they can be addressed. So, is there any other discussion on the motion?
Sorry, one, one last one, I apologize, but it's a question to the staff about the language in the Town's Comprehensive Plan versus the federal guidelines for fair housing. And what we see here is fair housing, everyone's entitled to fair housing on the basis, shall we not, shall not be discriminated or denied housing on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, national origin, handicap, or family status. It does not say the same things that the Fair Housing Act says about addiction, which is what we're speaking of here, or recovering addicts.
Right. And I took that off the proclamation that I included. That's straight from the proclamation. And no, the proclamation does not state that, but the question asked if it would be in conformity with the Town's Comprehensive Plan, and this question, I was using the proclamation as an example of that, not comparing it to the actual federal fair housing. They're two different documents, so...
Okay. Thank you. So one last comment, which I think is probably going to go more to staff, is it seems to me that this conditional use permit will hinge a lot on the code of public nuisance, to satisfy the neighbors and to have them realize that the city kind of has a certain standard in which they expect all neighbors within a general geography to behave as. And so this may need some research from staff to kind of flush that out and help both Spin and the neighbors understand what the scope of that would be.
Yes. And our town, our department's also open doors, so any questions, anybody has, you can always come in and either talk to myself, or Jamie, which is the director, James Marshall, the assistant town editor, he's also in the same office. So we, I think we need all the input we can get.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion from the commission?
No.
Here we go, further discussion. We have a motion to continue this hearing to the next meeting of the planning and zoning commission scheduled for August the 6th. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Right, so we will do back here and do this again in a month. That concludes public hearings under new business and community forum, we have nothing, under reports from staff. Staff.
I would just like to welcome Mr. Sandor to the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I think under reports for commission, we already welcomed you once, I'll welcome you again. And I'll use this opportunity to point out that we still do have one vacancy on the planning and zoning commission, which I'm about to get filled. I'd particularly love to have someone with some roots in the community, with some perspective of a multi-generational resident, that's just a personal feeling. Of course, it's open to anyone, but I'd really like to see a representative commission that's, that, you know, looks like Silver City. And I think it's a real opportunity for someone to get their feet wet in local government and make an impact on their town. I've said this before, it's a pretty minimal commitment. And so I really would love to see someone else join us up here, so that if I, if I forget that we have a planning and zoning commission meeting again, our vice chair can run it, and you don't have to wait on me. And so the last one of my report is an apology to everyone for my tardiness this evening. It was a busy day at the office, and that excuses it. Thank you. Mr. Kara?
Just thank you for showing up. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for listening.
Commissioner, do you have any, any reports?
No, I have no reports.
Okay, very good. The community that's here, is there any community input unrelated to the case that we just heard? All right, then. So with no community input, that brings us to the conclusion of our adjournment. Your motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn this meeting. I second this, a motion.
Motion to second. All those in favor, signal aye by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.